Alright, time to get this party started. Um, today we are on week five, day two of the Sumatame N3 series. Uh, just trucking along, just straight line, we're going through, getting it done. Um, starting a little late, sorry about that. Um, but uh, excited to continue in this lesson. I also decided to start writing the page numbers on the uh, on the actual worksheets, so if you're following along, you can kinda check it ahead of time if you haven't done so already. Um, so yeah, let's jump in. Alright, so today... Taki... See, that looks like yucky to me, but taki, taki... tatte, taki tatte. Freshly cooked rice. Uh, gohan ga taki ageta, aga- aga-ta yo. Taki agatta yo yo. Taki tatte no gohan wa ano oishine. No, kora... Tabe kakeite ano tachiage cha ikana yo, ikana yo. So don't stand? Hmm, alright, let's see what it means. Uh, the rice has just finished cooking. Uh, freshly cooked rice tastes really good, doesn't it? No, you shouldn't get up before you're finished eating. What? Hmm... Ah, cuz he's eating, but then he went to go get rice? Yeah, yeah, what do you do in that instance? Like, you service your guests? Or do you stick to the rules of adequate, like eating adequate? Alright, um, kaki ageru. So, yatto... Uh, de- deporto wo ano kaki ageta. Kaki ageta. I finally finished my paper. Okay, so this is ageru, aga- ageru. Ano kaki ageru, gatu. Uh, ami ageru. Skuri ageru. Shirabe ageru. Sodatte ageru. Uh, to mean something has just been completed. Okay, so this, this makes sense. Uh, oh, I got something going on in the background here. Okay, um, so kiki ga ano yaki agari mashita. So it's verb, and then you remove the mas, and then instead of mas, ageru, ageru. So to mean something has just been completed. Okay, let's see... Oops, sorry. Let's see this next, um, okay. Kakeru, ageru. Ageru, just finished, completed. Uh, juji ni pan ga yaki agerimasu. So the bread will be finished at ten o'clock.
Juji ni pan ga yaki agarimasu.
Alright, um... So verb stem. Ageru. Just finished, okay. So let's see, this one is on page six. Down to six. Alright, ageru. Here, but I think... Not just six. Okay, it's going crazy, okay. So this one, we want accomplishment, so it was the second one. Let's see over here. Daijina... Daijina okakasan ga ano kuru node ano haa haano i- iju oh uh, pika, pika ni mi-gaki ageru. Ageta. Uh, because an important guest is coming, my mother cleaned up the whole house. That doesn't sound exactly the same, right? Cuz this is complete, "I finally finished my paper." Accomplishment. A detective tied up a criminal with a rope, is able to move. Te ageru, but it's not te ageru, right? It's mas. But it has that statement here. So ageru, uh, when joined with a verb stem, means also uh, an action to make an object move upwards, it is also used figuratively. And then this one is, "When joining a verb stem, ageru expresses the accomplishment or completion of an act with verbs or creation such as uh... kaki, kaku, or..." I don't know that country. Um, it means to complete. It includes a sense of effort needed uh, to accomplish the act. Okay, so that's the right definition, but the examples aren't as straightforward as the, the ones here, right? Like, pardon? Um... Minna, minna de ano hito banju kakatte matome ageta data ga nai mono ga ni nu- nusu mareta. The data which took all night to complete were stolen by somebody. It's not like an exact, um, completion, right? Te ageru, but we're not talking about te here. So I don't know if there's an exact one-to-one, but this, this uh... explanation matches, so we'll go with that. Let's see. So to mean something that has just completed, okay. And then, uh, I guess the most important thing is that, uh, you drop the mas, and you add ageru. Or, uh, agerimasu da. Okay. Uh, gohan no duu ga ano oku kute tabe kirei na yo. "I can't finish uh, the rice because there is so much." Alright, verb, uh, ki- kirei, kirei kirei na. To show that there is nothing left. Okay. Hmm... "Gohan no duu ga oku te tabe kirei na yo." "I can't finish the rice because there is so much." Okay, so like, shows that there's nothing left, but kirei na, to me means that uh, that I can't, that there can't just be nothing left. Uh, nagai shousetsu wo ano ni kakakan, ni kakkan de futka, fut- futka kan de ano yomi kita. "I finished reading a long novel in two days." Hmm... Kita, so finished, completed. Where ageru is just completed, like it, it just happened. To show that there is nothing completed, okay. Let's see. Tatte, kirei na. Kirei na is to not be able to finish. "Kono heya ni ano goju hito wa ano irei kirei na, irei kirei na."
"Kono heya ni goju ni wa airei kirei na."
Oh, airei kirei na. Heirei kirei na, okay. Uh, can't finish, complete. Uh, this refers to an action A uh, that has the amount, duration attached to it, such as eating, running, writing, because of this can't finish, completion. Um... Can't finish, complete, uh, refers to the amount, duration being too many, much. Kirei na. Yeah. Kita. Tatte. Okay. Show that there's nothing left, kirei do, kirei, kirei. Alright, so this is one hundred and six four. Oh, it's just this little, little point here. "Sore wa, sore wa ikura ano kuyan demo kuyami kirei na koto datta." "I can't get over my regret." "Kore wa ikura kuyan demo kuyami kirei na koto datta." Kuyan. Kore, sore... "Sore wa ikura kuyan." Regret. Yan suffix. Hmm, need to do some research on the yan. Alright. Familiar person indicates emphasis. It's a grammar point, I haven't learned it. Okay, um... "Sonohito no kaware wa akiramekiraikirei na tsurai omoi de toshite ima demo otashino ano mune no okusoku ni aru." "The memory of being unable to accept our breakup still pains me deeply in the heart." Wow, okay, that was way over my head. Um... Kirei na, and I don't even see where the kirei... Ah, kirei na, right here, okay. Tsurai omoi de toshite. Alright, the, the mem- okay, um, expresses the notion that one can't do something completely, or can't do uh, something enough. Is that what, uh... Is that what this was saying? There's nothing left, can't do something enough. Hmm, don't touch the go. Alright. Onto the next, uh, next point. Who am I, Chi? Alright, yumi kake no hon. "Ano kono hon wa ano made yumi kakeda." "I haven't finished this book yet." "Ano, o- o-furo ni hai- hari kakeda tokii ni denwa ga natta." "The phone rang when I was about to get in the bath." Verb, okay, so we remove the mas form. And it becomes kakeru. Kake no noun, kakeda. Kakeru. Ano kaeri, kakeru. Shiba, shipoi. Kake, shikakeru. Ochi kakeru. Kakeru, in the middle of. That's not what I came to the conclusion, I haven't fin- ah, oh, okay, I get it, okay. The phone rings, okay, just in the middle, okay. "Watacha wa ano tomodachi ni hanashikakeda."
"Watacha wa tomodachi ni hanashikakeda."
Kakeda. "I dressed, started to talk to my friends." Okay, do aid towards someone. Uh, there's two, in the middle of, okay, it's the second one, so "Ano chotto ya- yakatta." "Yokatta." "Ano ima meiru shikakeda tokoro dattan desu."
"Chodo yokatta, ima meiru shikakeda tokoro dattan desu."
"Meiru shikakeda tokoro dattan desu."
"Chodo yokatta, ima meiru shikakeda tokoro dattan desu."
Hmm, perfect timing, I was just in the middle of writing an email. Okay, uh, okay. So, oh, you caught me just before I was about to leave work, got it, so like... Uh, "Oh, chotto yokatta, ano shikoto de" "de ta kakeda tokoro dattan desu." Hmm. Hmm... "Da- dasu, dashi" "Dashikakeda." Let's see, this one is on page eighty. Okay, there. Inversion of influence. Partway. This one's partway, okay. Um... "Tomodachi ni ano daijina ano sodan no ano te- te-gami wo kaki kaki kakeda tokii kinkan no ano biuru ga natta." "Just as I was about to write an important letter to a friend, the doorbell rang." "Kinkan no biuru ga natta." Let's see what four is. This four is "Ano izogashi ano hitobito no nakara de ano wasure kakeda itta hoshi zora no ano utuku shi, utuku shi sa wo kono sama, wa shima ah wo omoida saare te kureita." "This island has reminded me of the beauty of the starry sky, something which I had almost forgotten about in my busy daily life." Wow, deep. I love how deep these get. Alright, attaches to a verb stem, uh, and means that an action has been initiated, or an event is in progress, but still has, uh, to be completed. Uh, expresses either that an intentional action has been initiated, but is still in progress. As in one and two, or an unintentional event has started and is in progress, as in three and four. Okay, so in the middle of is a kake, kakeda. Alright, and the last one is yaki... Yeah, see, there we go, yaki, ah, okay, the kanji is different, okay. "Yakitatte no pan." So, "Yakitatte no pan wa ano oishii." Freshly baked pa- bread is really good. Okay, so again, this is, we remove the mas form, and then tatte no noun. Or verb, tatte ta. My day bone is uh... "Taki tatte." Whoa, 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 what's going on here? Um... "Pan, ano ki uh, nure tatte." Alright, dame is tatteru. "Yomitatte, ne- ne-tatte tabe tatte." Hmm, why? Why do we not use that? Yomi, not the... Cuz you can't... Freshly read something, or freshly eat something? Alright, let's see. Uh, actually, let's do this one first. Kereda. Kakeda. Tatte. "Ire-tatte no kohii wa ano ikaga teki desuka, itadakitsuka?"
"Ire-tatte no kohii wa ikaga desuka?"
Ikaga desuka? Alright, um... Tatte, so freshly, wow, just after. But uh, that is also kind of the similar grammar point. Without, okay, dude, so just finished. But these are all like freshly, okay, let's see what it says, two thirteen. Alright, tatte. So, tatte noun, tatte da. "Oboeta-te no ano gaifuku-go de ano hanashitemi- miru." "I'll try to speak in a foreign language I just learned." Okay, "Koko no pan wa ano yakitatte da te oishii." Hmm... So... "Kawa no yaki tori wo ano yakitatte te ichiba no oishii de desu." Hmm, hmm. Okay, I wonder if you can say ramen wo skuritatte te wo ichiba no mai. "Shibari tatte no orange juice wa ano ikaga desuka?" "Would you like some freshly squeezed orange juice?" "Yes, please." Okay, attaches to the stem of a verb and expresses the meaning has just been, verb. Uh, the range of verbs that can be used with this expression is limited. "Yomitatte no hon, a freshly read book." Okay, so you can't say that. "Yonda bakari no hon." "I've just read a book." Okay. Wow, it looks like freshly really is the, the big, um... Take away from this, like everything's saying freshly, um, but it is just after. Meaning has just been, verb. Okay. Alright, so that's why you can't do yomitatte. Tabe tatte. Neru, but see, this like made me think of it's like, do, do verbs. Can't be used, but I'm not seeing that said specifically. Tori tatte. Yakitatte, yakiru, yeah, so it's fine. Okay. Alright, so quick recap. Ageru was to just finish. To just be finished, and it's mas form. Kirei na. That it could or could not be completed? Uh... It says nothing left. Um... Kake no kake no hon. Kake is just, just completed? Ah, no, it's in the middle of, right? In the middle of. Okay, and then tatte, it's freshly. Okay, ageru, just completed. Kirita, kirei na is nothing left, but that was more, ah... Kirei, it's more like can, can be completed, or cannot be completed. Uh, kake, kakeru is in the middle of. And then tatte, freshly, like, more for eating? Or cooking? For the eating part, okay. Alright, let's take a stab at this. "Kare wa ano nani ka ii kakeda ano ii agete yameta." I don't remember a lot of usages of agete. "Kare wa nani ka ii kakeda yameta." Hmm, but I don't... Kakeru, kakeru is in the middle of, right? Um... "Taki ka- kake" "Taki tatte no gohan wa oishii." Okay. Freshly, freshly made gohan is oishii. Freshly, freshly made gohan is oishii. But I think in the other example, it used ager- ageru. Like for the gohan. Um. Nagai. Aida kakakute. Tsukutteita sakkin ga yatto. Dekiage mashda. Hmm, dekiageirimashda. Ah, oh, I forgot this. Agarimashda. I don't think it was a du- du- verb. I don't think it transcended into a du- verb mostly. Uh. Soko ni. Kakei kirei ni. Kaki agenai. By. Wa ano uru ura mo. Tsukatte kudasai ura. Backwards. Hmm. Soko ni kaki kirei ni. Kaki agenai byo wa. Ura mo tsukutte kudasai. Yeah. Ane ni, ano prezen to ni tsuru ano mafran wo. Hito ban de. Ami tatte tatte da. Ami ageta. Ano prezen to ni tsuru ano mafran wo. Hito ban de. Ami. Amiru? This one's a little difficult. It's weird. Oh no, ah! Ami. Ah, I've already forgotten what it was. Ami, ami da. Plant and knit. To compile. Oh, the wrap, okay, to fund it. Oh, no! Okay. I don't think that's right. Yeah, got that confused. I get that. Okay. Hmm, lots of Bs. I don't know, I'm not feeling confident. Alright, let's see, next one, uh. Atarashi no wo ano nani 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 ano hana ni iwareta. Hmm, atarashi no wo. Tsuk- tsukai kata kakei no wo. Kaono wa uh tsukai kiteka. Desu to. Hana ni warema. Atarashi no wo. Tsukaiwa ka. Tsukaiwa ke. Hmm. I think I can also do this. I don't think it will, uh, but I think you can. No, too much work. I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that. That was a bad idea. Just popped in my head now. Okay, um. Atarashi no wo. No. Tsukai kakei no. Kaono wa. Kai kiteka. Ka. Ka. Uh. Uh, this. Oh man, this, this is like all confusing and it, and what's confusing me is the no or noa. I don't think I've ever r- read a sentence where it had two noos. Um, this is a first, so atama. Atama. Atarashi no wo. Kaono. Wo. Tsukai kakei. Noo. Hmm. Hmm. Man, I'm stumped. Atarashi no wo. Tsukai kakei no. Oh. Sorry, wrong number three. Oh, kaono wa tsukai kakei no. Four one. Hmm. Atarashi wa kaono wo. So. The buying act. Oh. Kaono wa, so the buying act. Buying of something new. Hmm, hmm. Tsukai kakei no wo, it's in the middle of. Using. Hmm. This one got me, got me today. I think I also just totally blanked out on what kakkei, kakkei was. Kirei kiri. Hmm. Tsukai kiteka. Hmm. Hakiru in the middle of. Kite. Ki, oh. Kite is cut, right? So it's finished. Deka. Atarashi no wo. Kaono wa. Tsukai kakei no wo tsukai kateka desu. Yo to, eh, nah, it's just ugly. Nah, uh, this one's hard. Um. Tsukashi no wo. Kaono. Oh. Kakei. No wo. Kaono wa. Desu to. Desu to. Ah, okay. Yeah, oh. Four. Hmm, no confidence. Taking a vote of no confidence here. Alright, kacho wa nani 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 iru. Uh, shido. Shiain, sha- sha- no. Tsukarete kite. Nusha shita. De no. Kacho wa. Shido, shido. Shido. Shido guidance. Kacho wa shido de. Sha- uh, uh, kacho wa sha- no. Shido de tsukarete. Kacho wa. Sha- no guidance. De, or shido de. Nusha shita tatte no. Three, four. Kacho wa. Shin. Shido de. Alright, let's see. Wait, what? Did I answer? What, oh, yeah, 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 right, right. It's cause I, I filled in some ahead. Throw me off for a second there, okay. Oh. Ah. Oh yeah, today is not a good day. Two. One. Kacho wa. Ano nusha shita de no. Ano sha- no. Chido. Tsukarete iru. Okay, so I had the four, two and one right. Three was in the right place. Nusha shita. De no. Hmm. Sha- and so the new, okay, new company employee. Okay, and then this one was three, two, four, one. Kaono wa. Tsukai kakei no wo. Ano tsukai kateka desu to. Hana ni wareta. Okay, so this whole thing. I need review with somebody, cause uh. Yeah, it's a little, a little much missed. Okay, um. B A, B B A, B A, B B, ah. I got that. A. Okay. So karer wa nani ka iikakete yameta. And then kakei de is, I haven't finished it. Uh, in the middle. Karer wa nani ka iikakete yameta. In the middle of, what stopped? Okay. These ones didn't stick as well, uh, today. So. Yep, tomorrow, uh, I'll need to do some more, uh. Review of these. And uh, make sure that I ingrained them in my head, the, the middle, in the middle, I seem to, to kind of miss a bit. Um. Kakei de, yeah, kakei no hon. The freshly two kind of threw me off because the, like, um, actually before I close it out, this, um. Nusha tatte, nusha is. Like. New person, right? Like new shop. Yeah, joining the person. Nusha tatte. Ah, cause you can have a freshly new person? Okay. Alright, I think I, I see what it's, it's trying to throw down. Um. How did you do? Hope you did well. Definitely was difficult for me. Um. Yeah, so if you like what I'm doing, uh, please subscribe. Uh, I had a lot of fun today, even though I messed up. And I, I got a little tired at the end here. Um, it's definitely, you know, one thirty in the morning. Um, but I wanted to make sure I got in here, um, met with everybody. So, yeah, thank you, uh, for watching. Um, if you like, give it a thumbs up. Uh, if you have any suggestions. Uh if you have any suggestions, please leave them in the comments. Um and then, yeah, I'll see you tomorrow. Uh day three, so see you then. Alright.